Okay, so when I'm close, so when she's here.
It won't, it won't pick it up until you get closer. Is there not a handheld one? Like she could just like hold? I thought there was.
One minute, one minute. Well, good morning, everybody. We're go ahead and we'll start this, today's November 6th, school board work session. We'll go ahead and we'll start today with the district calendar. Superintendent Connor?
Thank you, Mr. Enos. At this time, we're going to have Danielle Swine come up and she's going to share the results of our recent district calendar committee meetings. What we try to do is when the calendar committee meets is to develop a school calendar for a two-year period. So it gives families enough time to, to plan out their personal affairs. And so, we're going to provide you an update as a result of those calendars.
Okay. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. As our superintendent said, I'm here to help understand, help share the calendar committee process and where we are at this time. So, the purpose of the student calendar committee is to create a calendar for the following two years. We propose a draft. We share it with our superintendent and we share it with you all. That is a recommendation that we come up with as a team. So, to, let me backpedal for just a minute. So, the, we determined two recommendations, one for each year. And then, we publish those recommendations to the public. We seek feedback and we provide that to you all after we publish it for the month of November. We, the calendar committee consists of folks that are selected by both the district as well as the union. So, we have the, we have an instructional representative, we have a classified representative, we have a principal. Typically, for us, we choose the school-related employee of the year. We choose the teacher of the year, if they're able to serve. We also have a volunteer. We, it's usually a volunteer of the year, someone who's served our schools in a large capacity. We ask a parent to participate. So, we had six members on the committee and the union also had six members on the committee. And then additionally, we invite folks to offer insight and input such as IT, curriculum, people who have information regarding, hi, regarding different pieces that would impact how we schedule the calendar. I guess I should have been doing that. So, there are two, the drafts for you, there you go. The drafts for you are here. I'll share with you that we presented multiple drafts initially and the committee talks about the strengths and challenges of each draft. And then, the point of the committee is to come to a consensus. And so, through a lot of discussion, these are the final two drafts we'd like to recommend. The reason that we come to these, that we came to these two particular drafts, if we'll skip to the next slide, we'll talk about the things that were considered and then we can go back and forth if that helps you all. So, we speak about what is the earliest day that students can start attending school? And by statute, that's August 10th. We look at things like how many hours are in each semester? We try to get our quarters and our semesters as equivalent as possible. Additionally, we look at, we try to have as many weeks with a full five days as possible to maximize instructional time. So, we look at where we place professional days. We try to conclude quarter two before winter break for a variety of reasons. One, if we have early graduates, and we typically have a handful of those folks, they can graduate prior to winter break. But also, to minimize the stress of students trying to learn over winter break for exams that would happen after winter break. So, that's always our hope, to try to conclude before winter break. So, there's a whole host of things that we consider and they're listed there in your documents for you. And so, that being said, the drafts that you see both start on August, the first Monday in August, they can. So, I'm going to pull a larger version for me because I can't see the smaller version. So, in '25, '26, it starts on August 11th, that's a Monday. And in '26, '27, it starts on August 10th, that's a Monday. From there, we, we proceed with things such as our six paid holidays that are outlined in our contract language and we ensure that our students are in school for 180 days. And again, so these are our two recommended drafts, one for each year. One of the things we identified this school year, and if you all remember, we tried to identify it two years ago as well, were, in the instance of inclement weather. So, when I referred to my notes from two years ago, it's, my first sentence was, "And as a result of Ian..." dot, dot, dot. Well, this year, it was "As a result of Debbie, Helene, Milton." So, we have identified for you the way in which we hope to work, should we, and I'll knock anywhere, should we experience inclement weather again, how will we address our student calendars? So, it's a bit more formalized this year. The last page in your presentation, we will identify, I guess, what we call inclement weather days or hurricane days with a hurricane icon on our calendars. And those hurricane icons are there in these scenarios. So, our contingency plan is to eliminate the half-days that students have in the month of December, which typically are preceding winter break. It's when they have exams. So, we would make those full days if we missed days prior to that. We would use professional days and non-student days as student days. We would push the end of quarter two after winter break. So, while it's not ideal, it would allow us to maximize as much as we can with the calendar that we've developed that doesn't then influence days off for staff members and students. So, additionally, we would conclude the year later in the last week of May if need be. So, for instance, on our calendars, the last day in May is the 26th for '26, '27, and the 27th for the '25, '26 school year. We would push those weeks later so they would end on the Friday of that week if need be for additional student days in school. So, what, where we are at this time is presenting to you all the recommendations. These are published on the website under, on the human resources webpage, there's a, and on the district webpage where it says calendars. So, they're out there as our recommended calendars and folks can provide feedback at calendar comments at Sarasota County Schools.net. So, over the course of November, we will collect those comments and then we'll get back on your all's schedule to share with you what our stakeholders have said about these calendars and should there need to be changes or any concerns addressed, we would do it at that time. You all have questions for me?
Ms. Marinelli?
Veterans Day always comes up. Can you explain how the decision is made for Veterans Day?
You bet.
Thank you.
So, quite, when I started at some point, so it's been a couple of years ago, we met with veterans in our community. And their recommendation was to stay in school so students had an opportunity to learn the value and the history of Veterans Day. And so, we've always attended school on Veterans Day and we have many schools that have recognition events that are very meaningful and so, we've maintained that.
Any other comments? Mr. Edwards?
I think my question, and I guess the public will weigh in on this, is that we scheduled this with the best of intentions for everyone, but in spite of the term inclement weather, they are disasters. And people respond to disasters in many different ways. And so, I'm, I'm not sure that just trying to plug and play hours, which I know we're required to by, by statute, if it really addresses the needs of our students to be ready to learn from, from that particular perspective? And our staff not being traumatized to be put back into a classroom, many of which have staff shelters? So, my question is, 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 can there be a little bit more flexibility? Is there a little bit more wiggle room? I guess my bigger concern, it's real easy to have days added at the end of the year. It was this, this first semester that I feel people were not ready to come back, had to come back, we, you know, and we have to accommodate the semester. Is there any way to give it a little bit more wiggle room?
I think the, the wiggle room would amount to pushing quarter two after winter break. I think we have that ability. It's just what level of change are we wanting to make and needing to make to address those concerns?
I don't, I don't know if there's a way to have a contingency, you know, like, well, we don't need this, so we're going to stick to the original plan. But my, my fear just is, is that the response, even though our, our intentions are correct, we want to get everybody back to class, we want instruction to be picked up. I just feel like even those extra half-days or things that we're plugging in, that people aren't even really ready to learn and teachers are not at their best. And I'm not, it, it's a, it's a, the best of a bad situation, but how do, how can we avoid it being additional stress and really be to the benefit of our students so that they are ready to learn? That's my question. And I'm not trying to be difficult. If it, that's the best we can do, that's the best we can do. It just seems that this doesn't, you know, I was here for the Ian conversation and here we are again. So, it seems like it's going to be part of our conversation unfortunately, and I'm just trying to figure out really what's in the best interest of our students and our staff in that case.
So, I think that it's situational every single time. And when we think back to what we did this time, we did give a lot of lead time on the front end of each storm before we decided to open shelters, which we had a lot of positive feedback from our school-based staff that run shelters, that they had time to take care of their families, get things in order before they became, you know, the lead of a crisis in, in the school sites they were assigned to. And then, after the fact, it was definitely a day-to-day reflection on where people were and where they weren't. The superintendent did create that survey that went out to staff. That was the, that single survey had the most responses than every, any survey we've ever done. And a lot of communication on where people are, can they get back to work? How do we help you do that? And also, flexibility at each school site for those that were dealing with particular crises that were going to prevent them from being at work, that we're not going to penalize them in any way, but how do we get support? And then, also, people really gave us feedback too, that they were happy to get back to normal, that it just calmed things down and gave them a sense of normalcy and we were able to support our students who needed that and their parents that maybe were taking care of other things and then also feeding everyone. So, I do think it's situational. I think it's always a discussion and I think we look at the dynamics every time, but I think that tool did provide us a lot of green lights on how and when we went back and we really did use that regularly to determine if our staff was ready to do that. I don't think it could ever, you know, be perfect for anyone. But then, the other point to that is we have to file, make sure that our graduates have the right semester hours, which is one of those statutes, which is why we push that semester back because we can. And, you know, if we needed to push that semester back even further, we can. And all that does is push back the second semester into potentially June, which also pushes back graduation. So, I think all of that is always a discussion. We're always taking feedback on that and making sure that we're coming back at the right time. It's a sensitive situation. So, you bring up a great point and I do think we did a lot of scrimmaging around that this time.
I, I want to compliment. It's not that I'm judging any of that. Everyone really reacted beautifully and the superintendent and I really had a conversation about that, the, the survey and who's where and what's going on. So, I, I guess, I appreciate the, the sensitivity around it being situational and I'm on that page. All I'm really trying to say is that it seems more and more likely, and I'm just asking if there's a way to be a tad more proactive in the planning of the calendars. That's, that's really, and I, I don't know the answer to that, but that's the chat, that's the question I'd ask.
Is that, is that rhetorical, Mr. Edwards?
I'll take it that way.
Okay, all right, perfect. I, I will add one last piece and that would be if, if this weren't to work and we needed to restructure, our superintendent has the opportunity and ability to change it in emergencies as he sees necessary. So, certainly, I would imagine that we'd go back and scrimmage additionally when there's events that we have to give greater consideration than what we've afforded here in our calendar.
I do want to, I know it was rhetorical, but I, when we looked at this and if we would have taken the inclement weather plan and made that the first semester plan, it does change the dynamics of our holidays, how much time we can have during Thanksgiving, when we do our spring breaks. It did domino a lot of other built-in expectations and things that were contractual and things that people on that committee valued because that committee is made up of district staff, school-based staff and a parent. And so, we did talk about that, but making that a permanent approach was going to change the whole dynamic of the whole calendar as well. So, we chose to say, if we had to do it, could we apply the same emergency clause and do what we did this year? And that was where we landed this year.
So, and I'm good with that. So, here's what I would say. I, I think that we're moving in the, in a direction and hopefully, we never have any more disasters ever again and we're done with that. But if not, then we should be perhaps compiling the data year over year over year so that if we have to make a change on holidays, that it's data-based and, and we're not having an argument with parents or whatever, this is in everyone's best interest. So, we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you for the detailed update. I do want to, I recently had a chance to meet with a Jewish congregation at a Temple, Temple Emanuel. And one of the things that I want to add to this is indicating those Jewish holidays so that we, that our faculties, our administration are aware of those important sacred holy days and are not planning major events or testing or picture day or things of that nature so that we can avoid some conflicts in, in respect to that. So, I just want to make sure that that, that will also be included in the final draft.
Yeah, and thank you. And I know that, you know, you have six, six days that are technically penned in there and the rest of the stuff and I know that, I appreciate the committee. I know as a parent, that, I know everybody asks about Thanksgiving holiday. I mean, in college, I know that they get out that Wednesday and then Thanksgiving's Thursday in a lot of Florida schools. So, to have that extra time, I know families are very, very appreciative and I know that the calendar is for them to be able to plan. And, and talking to some of the students, they would rather come back on Saturdays than go into June, which basically what, what they said. Because when they say, well, Coach, can't you just cancel school for another week? And I go, well, great, you just come back in June. And they're like, oh, no, no, we're, we're good, we'll come back, we're good, we're good. So, at the end of the day, thank you, Ms. White. Great job on the calendar and greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Moving on to the next superintendent, Connor, Wellen Park naming and mascot.
Thank you, Mr. Enos. So, I'm going to call up our chief of high schools, Dr. Green, to share an update from our recent committee, naming committee for our new high school in Wellen Park. As well as Diane Camerati.
Yes.
Good morning. Try again. Good morning, board members and superintendent Connor. Today, I'm excited to present the recommendation from our work group for the name of our new high school. Under policy 8.55, a work group was convened and comprised of staff and community members who have a vested interest in the new school. Following the meeting, the recommendation was submitted to me in which I brought forward to Cabinet and now here to you today. A call for interest email was sent to the naming committee on October 2nd where all seven members confirmed their attendance. The meeting date was set for October 23rd and held on-site. All seven members were in attendance. There were four staff members and three community members, one from Venice, Northport and Wellen Park. We started with an overview of our agenda where we went around, did introductions, shared a review of the school designs that was led by our construction team. We reviewed the school board policies and process that we would follow for the naming committee. We went through the naming of the school and mascot brainstorming. We took a vote and then went through next steps. We concluded the meeting with a campus tour led by our construction team. In naming of the school, we reviewed the school board policy 8.55 and each criterion from which a school board, I'm sorry, a school name can be selected. After a careful review of the policy, the committee ruled out criteria E and F as not applicable to this project. Criteria A, B, C, and D were discussed by the committee. A name was submitted by a district employee for the new school to be named after a decorated Navy commander from the area, Clyde E. Lassen. Some of the recommendations were Clyde E. Lassen High School, Lassen High School at Wellen Park and Lassen High School. After discussion, the committee expressed their appreciation of Commander Lassen's heroic acts and service, but unanimously voted to name the new school Wellen Park High School due to its location. The committee all agreed there was a great opportunity to connect the theme of patriotism in the mascot and colors to honor veterans like Commander Lassen. And so, in that discussion, there were several mascots that were discussed, Eagles, War Eagles and Patriots. War Eagles was not favored due to the term war in the name. Patriots because the neighboring South County Middle School, Heron Creek, their mascot is the Patriots. And we landed on Eagles. That was the choice of the committee because of its patriotism and because Eagles and Eagles' nests are seen frequently in the area. And also, we talked about how there's a great opportunity with Eagles' wings and the W of Wellen Park for different murals and decorations around, around the campus. A motion was made and seconded to call the school Wellen Park High School and to name the mascot the Eagles and the motion passed unanimously. On October 28th, Cabinet reviewed the recommendation and also a sample of the colors and Cabinet was able to vote on the color scheme of the different red, white and blue options and those I have for you today. And that is, that concludes my information update on the Wellen Park naming committee recommendation.
Any member comments? Mr. Edwards?
I, I was involved in several impassioned conversations around the lesson veteran concept. And what I, and we, I as a board member, I think all of us got the email. And one of the things that I found, that my takeaway from that email, which was extensive and heartfelt and well-written, was that I didn't know a lot of our schools were actually named for people. And the part that I take away from that is that we perhaps select a name at the moment or at the time and then over, over time in history, it sort of dissipates. What I was going to suggest, and then I heard the conversation about Veterans Day today, is that I think it's much more meaningful and has a longer lasting impact if we really take a hold of that story and, and embed it into our Veterans Day conversations on an, on an ongoing annual basis so that, that, that particular alumni and that veteran is forever embedded into our school district. So, I think that's a better way to handle the conversation and I'm ready to support the, the name, but I, with my strong recommendation that we get as much history and, and get as much information about Commander Lassen and embed it into our Veterans Day programming.
Ms. Marinelli?
And on that same vein, there's many ways, there can be a plaque there, you know, because many schools have their Hall of Patriots or, you know, people and, and so that might be a way that we can honor commanders. So, I think it's, it's, I don't want anybody to think that we are ignoring it because I thought the email we got was very heartfelt. And I was, I've been here a long time and I didn't realize Tatum Ridge was named after a Tatum. You know, I just thought it was where, the location. So, I think there's just ways that we can address that without naming the building. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and the, and the other thing, that was what I was going to say is we did as a school board, we changed the policy in reference to naming. And that's how we had John Sprague came up and referenced a review. There's nothing to state that based on the accomplishments of the commander that there's something at the school, that a building is designated as administrative building, the football field, there could be a lot of different things. Media center that he would not be recognized for his achievements. But thank you for all the hard work, Superintendent Connor.
Yeah, and, and to that point, I also know that it will have a junior ROTC program at the school that I believe is naval. It's, it's based on the Navy, so. So, I think there's opportunity there as well. I think it's definitely a contribution and a recognition that we want to. I love the idea of embedding it throughout the district, so it's not just contained at Wellen Park High School, but it's, it's throughout our district and, and the recognition. So, appreciate all of the recommendations that come forth. I think we can, we can move forward with that. So, just as a, as a final note to this, this would actually be voted on at a future board meeting. We want to move quickly just because of construction and ordering and materials and color schemes that have to start taking place soon. So, this will be brought to a very, a future board meeting rather soon.
Thank you, Superintendent Connor. Okay, thank you very much. We are now going to be moving on to the K-8 boundary advisory committee recommendations. Superintendent Connor, please.
All right, so this will be the bulk of our workshop today. A lot of work has been done in, in reference to our new K-8 school that is Sky Ranch K-8, officially named at a previous board meeting that we have. Today, we're going to talk about a very important item related to the school, and that is the boundaries and the recommendation that has come forth as set through our school board policy. We followed that very, very meticulously to ensure that we've got the right feedback, the right representation of those schools that would be potentially impacted to come to you today with that recommendation. Before we get there, though, I want to show a sneak peek of where we're at in terms of the construction update for our new school before we begin. So, if you'll roll that. A lot of progress is being made at Sky Ranch School. Our brand-new K-8 set to open for the 25-26 school year. This project is more than just construction. It's about creating a safe, modern, innovative space for our students to learn and grow. All right, so we're here at Sky Ranch.
Yes, sir, we are. Great school.
I met with Steve Clark, our construction project manager, who's been overseeing the build from day one. Construction has been moving smoothly, with our team on track to welcome students next August.
So, as you can see here, this room is just about there. I mean, we need some flooring and some few trim pieces, but this one already has a ceiling in place.
So, I mean, just looking at the progress made right here, it seems like we're well within our timeframe to open up in August.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Our classrooms are equipped with the latest technology, including voice enhancement systems and adaptable learning spaces to support a wide range of teaching methods. Sky Ranch School will feature a strong STEAM curriculum with dedicated spaces for robotics, engineering, and hands-on science learning.
This is the robotics, engineering corner. This room is your lab. This is where all your machines and your CNCs and all that are going to be. Those two rooms are your classrooms. One is robotics, one is engineering. We wanted to have this window so that anybody walking by out here can kind of see what's going on.
To inspire curiosity, we've even added a few behind-the-scenes areas with student visibility in mind.
So, what you're looking at here, this is the main MDF room for the school. This is where all your server racks and all that will be. So, I wanted to expose that structure. Any student can walk by here. They'll be able to see all the wiring, they'll see the flashing lights, they'll see how the internet and phone lines and all that stuff work in this school.
The school's design emphasizes open sightlines and secure spaces while maintaining an improved flow of movement throughout the corridors.
I told the design team, no dead-end corridors. I want clear line of sight from every angle of the building, which we have right here. You can see every exit in these four directions, and that's for security.
Beyond education, Sky Ranch School will support our community during emergencies.
This is going to be an EHPA, which is an enhanced hurricane protection facility. We will have a generator and transfer switch, massive generator on-site, that will operate most of the school during a shelter event.
With the school's secondary function as a hurricane evacuation center, designers included a pump that will pull water from the five retention ponds on-site if necessary.
If we lose capability for municipal water, they can turn that pump on, and we start pumping water. And so, now you can flush toilets, you can run sinks. Won't be able to drink it, but at least you'll have running water.
It is exciting to see this project come to life, knowing the positive impact it will have on our students, families, and the community for years to come.
Schools become a pillar, a cornerstone of a community. And to see this from the start and see it come up off the ground and what it's going to do to this community and the positive impact that it's going to have, really is something I'm proud to be a part of. I know you are, and I can't wait to see when the students walk the halls of the school in just a few more months.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent and Board. It's awesome to see that, to see, you know, there's an old statement, vision without implementation is hallucination. So, when you see these things come together, it's great. I'd like to turn it over briefly, just to give some additional details and construction update on Sky Ranch with our, with Ms. Drager and Mr. Dumas, facilities and construction.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity. Just know for our team here today that's going to present to you, this is an exciting time. So, I want to take you back a little bit in history. So, about five years ago, if you were a board member, you had an item come in front of you from our planning department, and that was to purchase a piece of property. It was a farmer's field out east of the interstate as, as a plan for a new school site because of the ongoing development that we knew was coming, had started, but we knew was coming in the area. Fast forward a few months after that, you then approved a CIP that in it had a, a brand-new K-8 school that you were funding in the five-year capital plan. And we were all excited at that time because that was our first new school build in a long time. And not only a new school build, but the first time we have ever built a K-8 facility. And so, those two items, those two approvals got us, started us on the pathway that got us here today. Once those two approvals started to happen, our team then started looking at designs across the state and, and vetting through what was the best of the best that had been built from K-8 design. Working with not only the curriculum department, but athletics, the entire team focused on, let's bring the best model we can to Sarasota County. And so, that's what you have developing today. That's what you see in the video that Superintendent Connor got a chance to tour the other day. And that, your team is so excited to bring that to you here in this coming summer to turn over to students in the community. So, with that, let me turn it over to Jane Drager, our awesome director of construction, and she'll talk to a little bit, talk to you a little bit more about the details of where we are and what it's going to take to get done.
Thanks. I, I think Superintendent Connor really did a much better job than I could in that video. But what I will say is that we're really excited to be doing finishes at this point. We're putting it up, ceiling grids and floors, cabinetry, we're starting wood stage floor. We're kind of coming down what we call the home stretch in construction. We expect substantial completion in May, and then FFNE and R move in over the summer to welcome students in August 2025 on budget and on schedule. This has been a super exciting, challenging, fun, and wonderful time, and I'm so thankful for you all giving us this opportunity to provide this for our community. And I just want to share with you a little quote that is always in the back of my mind, and it is, whatever good things we build end up building us. And this school has already built up so many people and will continue to do for generations to come. So, thank you. Sky Ranch School is coming soon.
And thank you. And you're going, I want to just ask the question of the staff, we're going to be on time and under budget, correct?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Thank you for, thank you for that. It's, it really is an exciting time. When you see that video, you see what we're going to be doing together soon and the growth that, the growth that takes place that brings opportunities to build. And it brings opportunities and brings challenges at the same time. It's, I mean, it truly is great to be desired. And I think as the Sarasota County schools continues to work towards becoming number one, Mr. Connor will not have anything else, won't rest until we're number one. As we continue that, we just continue to be more and more desired as we become the premier system. So, with that said, you know, there's a direct correlation between growth and, and capacity. I thought it would be neat to show you on the screen, this is a tool we have called NearMap. And really, what it does for us is allows us to track development. What you're looking at on the screen, for those at home watching online, or for those here in the, in the room, you're looking at this area 10 years ago. And what the NearMap technology allows us to do is track current, I mean, existing development, current active construction pros, progress. And it also lets us map out what's happening in the future. So, there is a method to the madness of managing growth. So, I'm going to ask Ms. Comanati, if she would, if, as she pulls, that was 10 years ago, that area we're looking at now, when you pull this line back to, to current, what you're going to see is the, the development that has taken place in that area over the last 10 years. So, basically, what that tells us, we, we see what is, what is. We, and the red there that you see, the colors, that is active construction that's taken place in that region. So, we know about that. And, but what this does not show you, what it does not show you is what Ms. Comanati and the planning team know, and that's the approximately 15,000 to 20,000 homes that will be coming into this, that are already planned for and approved through the county, that the developments that are coming in. We're looking at 15,000 to 20,000 homes in that area in the next, in the next 10 years. So, I just think that's a, it's an interesting tool. It's real-time. It shows us what is, what's already done, what is being done. And, and with the information we have coming down the pipe with growth. So, growth, so growth is an interesting piece. I just thought that, that's one of the tools that we use as we implement board policy and we put the variables together to develop boundaries. It is so much about managing growth. And then, I said, there's a direct correlation between growth and capacity. With that said, you know, building new schools is the exciting part. You get to see all the exciting part. We picked a new principal back in May, Ms. Jamie Hannon. She's excited, she's doing great work, getting ready, a lot to do to get prepared for August 25. School, you, you approved the school name and the mascot back in September. So, we are ready, we'll be ready to open Sky Ranch August 2025, on time, under budget, right? Right, right team, on time, under budget. Outstanding with that. So, so I wanted to show you NearMap to let you know, managing growth, you've heard me say this before, managing growth is, is a key component of this. We know where the development is, we know where it's coming, and the planning team is responsible for keeping track of that with all the, all the information going on with the county building and development and all, all that's happening. So, managing growth also comes with some challenges. And one of the most difficult things, we've had this conversation, this is really not a presentation today, this is really about a conversation. The conversation really is about managing growth and how we do that and the challenges that go along with it. One of the most difficult things we may have, we have to face as a board and, and district sometimes is when we go through the process of drawing, developing new boundaries and, and what we can do. Once you apply the school board policy, there's some interesting things that take place, which we'll talk about in, in just a second. But managing growth is probably a key piece. And you know what? We need to, we need to understand that we have opportunities to serve all the time, and the challenges that are coming before us will soon become, these type of opportunities will become more frequent. But what I want to do is I want to introduce, I want to recognize the district team. Under the leadership of Chris Renoff early on and, and Brandon, Dr. Johnson, we actually, they actually, and Diane, they actually started very early back January, February, talking with the teams. But I want to recognize this team. There are a lot of individuals that are involved in the, in the process from beginning to end. They, they are all committed, they all, we all have one goal of doing what's in the best interest of all ki, all kids in, in the, in the long term and making sure the district's in the best position to open under the Florida statute and the board policy. So, to me, this team has been unbelievably committed throughout the entire process. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our chief of middle schools, Dr. Brandon Johnson, so he can take you through not only the team, but the, the committee and, and some of the process, and we'll talk more in a second. Thank you.
Appreciate it, sir. First and foremost, good morning, I think it's still the morning time, right, Superintendent and board members. I do want to kind of elaborate a little bit back on the district team itself, just really for also the community to understand. The reason why we put that team together is some of the scenarios that you'll see later, from transportation to capacity, food and nutrition, athletics, offerings that we'll have, we needed this team to make sure that we have everything in place before we make final decisions. So, I really do want to give them a round of applause. You can see behind us, there are quite a few people that are involved in this particular process. And then, just a special shout-out to Mr. Renoff, as Dr. Kemp said, did start this process before he left and then passed it on to us as well. So, the boundary advisory committee, most people have heard of that. Really, these are the representatives from Ashton, Lakeview, and Sarah Middle. And the reason why we have those three particular schools, because those are the three that will be impacted when Sky Ranch does open up. Now, just to kind of give information, what goes before this actually happens? We actually had a SAC meeting that anyone could attend. This was all the way back, I think somewhere in like February. And part of that process was really just to get people understanding that this was coming, right? Because that's kind of that first thing, we kind of primed the pump to make sure that no one is caught off guard that, hey, we're not only going to have these meetings, but at the end of the day, we do have to make a decision. And so, as part of those meetings, I kind of stood up there to help everyone understand not only the process and what the, the board policy says, but at the end of this, we will have to make a decision. And I kept saying that. And why? Because I know the impact that it will have, not only on families, but the community. And so, as you see those representatives, just as a reminder, the principal and the SAC chair, of course, are the two members who are on there, but they actually are the ones who worked through selecting the rest of the team. How do we go about that? They have to have representation based on the surrounding areas of their actual school so that we don't have people all from one area. So, when you ask like, hey, was there someone maybe, you know, from Clark or maybe from Sky Ranch area? The answer is yes, because that's partially what they have to do. That's part of their job to build that. We do not select those particular individuals, they do. So, I do want to thank those individuals, because as you see later on in the slide, we did have quite a few meetings to get to the point where we are now, where we'll actually be able to show you the scenarios and what was selected. Okay? School board policy 5.2, and I won't read it for everyone, but please just kind of take a look, even for people at home, that we do follow a policy. We, we don't make these things up. We try to make sure that we do exactly what you guys have in writing to ensure that we have a fair process. And then, just kind of a continuation, I do want to touch upon a couple of bullets up here, because this is the important part, when you think about when we actually do draw the lines, how do we determine how we actually do that? And yes, Ms. Comanati is the expert clearly in this process and knows every single area around this whole county, which was very impressive, just so you know. Attendance areas will be designed to incorporate entire neighborhoods, keeping neighborhood children together. Huge piece, right? I think all of us would agree with that. We strive to not actually act a re-district more than once. I think most of us would actually, you know, go, that's also another big piece. And then, last, look at the last bullet, when attendance boundaries are changed, elementary and secondary students with one year remaining and their present school will have the option remaining. So, when you think about this particular process, we try to make sure that not only that we can get capacity to the new school, right? And we alleviate some of the stress of, of the schools that they're leaving, but we also take into account people, students who have been there, some of them, let's be very fair, since they were in kindergarten, right? So, that's also part of it. And then, I do want to point to your attention to the publicly advertised meetings. So, when I told you, starting really back in almost February, that was just the SAC meeting, just to let everyone know that it was coming. And then, we have public notice meetings starting in April with that actual committee that you saw earlier on the slides. That was the committee that actually drove what you're going to see today, along with not only Dr. Kemp and the teams, but their, some of the policies and procedures that he had in place to make sure that we were looking at the major variables and that we weren't kind of getting off on the side, which is incredibly difficult, because this process is emotional. We can, we can say we want to take that out of it, but this involves not only communities, but also involves families and involves kids. And so, part of our job is to make sure that we do stick to those variables with an understanding that, hey, listen, we do know that this is going to impact some families. And once again, what did I say from the beginning? But we have to make a decision. Okay? So, with that being said, I do want to point your attention, from April to May, we did have our first two meetings. And someone may be asking, why was there a gap between October? That was the summer. And so, to make, to ensure that we had the actual committee and the people being able to come, we did postpone to make sure we could come back into October. And so, once we actually had that meeting, that's where a lot of the interesting information came up and making sure that they knew those scenarios throughout. But in between May and October, Diane also, because there were other scenarios that were brought up, that it's in your packet and people at home you'll see on later slides, we did also take that in consideration as well, gave us time to run the numbers within those scenarios as well. So, even though there were scenarios brought forth, there were actually ones that the committee could also come up with as well, that we needed to go look at numbers. Okay? And then, of course, you think about the board workshop, which is today, that we're doing our presentation. We will have the public hearing on November 19th, and then, we will ask for you guys to take action also on November 19th. Before we move to the next slide, I do want to make sure this is incredibly clear. We did start website with Sky Ranch pretty much from the beginning, and thank you to the communications department. And up there had pictures as it was changing, kind of like the video that Mr. Connor had. We had frequently asked questions. You could actually submit any questions that you had throughout the process, and it also had all of the dates of the meetings. The reason for that, so that we were being transparent. Anyone could show up, whatever the case may be. We did not have really anyone from the public until probably the last meeting, and at that particular point- at that particular point, of course, we do have the process that the committee works through. And I did want everyone, including the people that were there, to understand, we do work through this process. As we work through it, I will answer questions at the end, but please understand, between April and up to now, there's a process that this committee is following, including having to score the scenarios. So just wanted to make sure that everyone was on the same page. And I will turn it back over to Dr. Kemp.
All right. Thank you so much. There's another quote that says, in order to, sometimes to grow through it, you have to go through it. So you have to go through some of these processes, as far as the redistricting and looking at that. I just want to make sure that the board understands that everything, everything from the inception has been posted publicly, as Mr. Johnson, Dr. Johnson said, on the website, as far as the minutes, agenda minutes, what was presented, everything is there publicly, and for transparency purposes. I just want to make sure that the community understands that, as well as restate to the board. So let's talk about the boundary developments and considerations. The whole high growth drives, when you build a new school, high growth drives this opportunity. Based on your board policy, based on Florida statute, school, the state requirements for ed facilities, it's called SREF. But the whole purpose of this feasibility and developing boundary considerations is regardless of what's presented, it has to address three issues. It must address relieving capacity at the overcrowded schools. So the goals pretty much were relieving capacity at Ashton, Lakeview, and looking at the impact on Sarasota Middle. In addition to that, you're opening up a brand new K-8 state-of-the-art school. So in order to open that school, you have to open that school with a level of service that will allow it to operate and then offer the comprehensive programs, that we need to have the right number of capacity to staff it and to do all those things we need to do. So relieving overcapacity, meeting levels of service, and then a critical component, and sometimes the public may not understand this, but a critical component is our student information system and our GIS and how they integrate. Students are geocoded into the system. So when you take, if you take a new area, a new school is being built, and from that new school is the center point of a circle, from that new school, if you expand out to a diameter of a circle, the student residents that are in that school impact that. So they're geocoded. So when you take a look at the development of boundaries, these three things are taken into consideration. What are the location of the kids? That determines enrollment, where they are, the distance from the new school, and what we need, what we need to accomplish to open with a, with an effective level of service. Now, in addition to the board policy that you have put in place, there are also Florida statutes, there's state requirements for educational facilities that we have to find. And also, having done this many, many times, you know, trying to help the public understand, you know, we just can't draw, we draw boundaries however we want to draw them. We have some guidelines through Florida statute, not only your board policy, but Florida statute, and the state requirements for educational facilities. Number one, I just want to briefly talk about some of those primary variables. You're talking about natural boundaries, bridges, waterways, major thoroughfares and roadways. They're often borders of a boundary through SREF. Also, we have to look to relieve overcapacity. We have to look at the utilizations. The whole purpose for building the new schools to relieve capacities at schools within the study area. So we also have to look at that level of service. And that circle from the center of the new school out is what's called an impact study area. And Diane and her team have all the data on that circle from the new school surrounding. And regardless, there's only so many ways to slice up that data, that data set. The data set is the data set. And from that, we want to make sure that the whole purpose is to address the growth, the current and projected planned development, not just the growth that is happening now, but the growth that Ms. Comanati and her team in planning know that's coming through all the developments that are, that are planned already. May not be plotted, but they're planned and they're ready to roll. Another thing, another directive that we've tried to work through is the Portable Reduction Act. The Portable Reduction Act's important. The board has given direction in the past regarding the wish to reduce portables. And as we go through these new school builds, one of the things we look at is the portable reduction. It does impact level of service. And it, it is definitely, some of our, most of our portables in this particular situation are approaching 20 years old. And they, we wish, we desire, because of safety, because of just age-related things, that we look at reducing portables everywhere we have an opportunity, from a safety perspective, though they're safe and meet building compliance and building code. I think everybody can agree, a portable not only is unsightly, it's, it's just not to the level of hardening that today's schools are, are expected to have. So Portable Reduction Act's a big piece. Geographic proximity, you know, you start from that school, you work your way, the new school, the new build, you work your way out. So geographic proximity is something that we're required to look at. From an operational perspective, we also have to look at what the impacts are for transportation and logistics. Our transportation team does that by looking at the projected routes that are in the boundary now, the current boundary, and looking at, I mean, the current routes, and then they do projected routes based on the data that our planning team provides them. Safety considerations. There's hazardous, I mean, SREF requires it, Florida statute requires it, safe walking conditions, things within a two-mile radius. And back to transportation, you know, transportation's limited within the radius as well. So each scenario will bring, sometimes bring about different, different data, projected data on the number of students impacted, whether they're bus riders or not. We get that data. Excuse me. As Dr. Johnson said, we try to avoid multiple moves. And your policy asks us to do that as well. We're impossible. You know, we try not to impact students more than once within the same couple of year period, even though in some high, high-growth districts, sometimes there's not an option. For us, our goal is to avoid multiple moves with an impacted student in a study area. So another thing we look at on the academic side, with our academic team and our chiefs, is the programmatic equity to ensure that, you know, we take a look at new builds, and look what programs that might be of need, or this, from the field, whether that's an exceptional education program, a special, a special program, a magnet program, we look at that. We, for Sky Ranch particularly, we are adding pre-K to that, to that mix. So that, those are some of the variables that we look at. Excuse me. A question comes up all the time about, well, why are those variables, you know, why were those variables? Who said those variables? That these variables are grounded in Florida statutes. And I decided to go ahead and put that out there for the community within the minutes from the October 2, to let them know that utilization is part of Florida statute, and our school board policies. Addressing growth is also part of Florida statutes and school requirements for education facilities. Those state requirements, we just can't build a school when we want to, even if we had the money, cash in the bank, we just can't build it where we want it, when we want it. We have to demonstrate the need for the growth with the state. So the statutes govern that on these planning variables for those. Also, the Portable Reduction Plan that's there, the act that's there, and what we're trying to do with that. It's also listed in, often it's listed in the Capital Improvement Plan, your SIP plan, your five-year plan that you guys approve. We put it in front of you every year. Transportation, we have transportation policies and rules we have to follow. And safety, and again, the safety considerations regarding safe walking, hazardous walking conditions, and, and safety as relates to transportation. So the boundary development considerations are, we're confined, we're confined from the data set within the radius of the school, all the way around through that diameter of the circle. We're confined with the number of students that are, that are in those areas. We're confined by Florida statute, we're confined by the board policy. And so we start working within that data set, and slicing as many data sets as we can, and looking at as many scenarios as we can. But before I turn it over to Ms. Comanati and the, and the planning team, to just talk about the feasible scenario development, anything that the planning team brought, even though we looked at every potential way that data set could be cut, it has to be feasible. Let me define feasible for you and for the community. Feasible means it has to relieve the overcapacity conditions at the elementary schools. Feasibility means not only does it have to do that, we have to have an acceptable level of service to effectively open the investment that we've made in Sky Ranch K-8, ready to roll. And we have to follow Florida, the Florida statutes that are associated with it, our board policy and that. So when you take that data within that circle, and Ms. Comanati's going to review, review some of that with you, there's only so many ways you can slice that data up, and, and be within the parameters of the law statutes, and be within the goals of relieving overcapacity and creating a level of service that makes it viable for us to do this. So with that said, and feasibility defined, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Comanati and the planning team. We had a consultant as well. Mickey, is she here? Mickey's here. Y'all might recognize her, she was a longtime planner in our county. So we're going to turn it over, because three, 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 three actual, three feasible scenarios were presented to the boundary advisory committee on those parameters that we have to follow. Ms. Comanati?
So yes, based on the objectives that we were trying to meet, we actually brought two scenarios to the first boundary advisory committee meeting. And those are behind you and in your presentation as scenario one and scenario two. And looking at trying to alleviate overcapacity at Ashton, Lakeview, and Sarasota Middle, and creating a level of service acceptable to open the Sky Ranch K-8. Those two scenarios were devised by my team and brought to the committee at the first meeting. By the third meeting, or at that meeting, actually, the, the boundary advisory committee itself came up with a third scenario that they wanted us to look into. We went back and put together the, the map for that, and all the data, and that is in your packet as scenario three. So those are the three feasible scenario options that we will be presenting today. And I'm going to actually get up and walk you through the maps and show you the, I got, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. So I'm going to walk you through the, the boundary for the new K-8 in, in each of these. So scenario one, and I don't know if you can see me here, if I should start here, but scenario one starts at the junction of Clark Road and the Legacy Trail, heading east across the interstate, along Clark Road, and, which becomes State Road 72. And it follows that along, all the way to the Sarasota County, DeSoto County line. And then, these are the existing southern boundaries of Lakeview, Sarasota Middle, and Ashton. But these do follow boundaries themselves. Like, this is the county line, this is the northernmost boundary of the Northport city limits. And we follow that. We go northeast, or northwest, sorry, along the Maiaque State Park line. It goes to a junction at Calpensloo, and then west to the interstate, north along, this is the boundary line for an existing development called Isles of Sarasota. So we come along that. We go to north on Honorre, to Central Sarasota Parkway, and again, to the Legacy Trail, north to Clark Road. So scenario one, that would be the boundary. And I'm going to go into detail for this scenario, and then each, each other one will be kind of based on this one. So that's what scenario one looks like.
So if we can go back to the PowerPoint, we'll put that data up.
And that is the scenario, again, how it affects the elementary school. This would be the middle school, because it's one boundary for both. Oh, thank you, sorry. And then we're going to look at the data behind that. So, and a lot of this will start with scenario one, because some of the data's the same for all three. But you, you have your permanent fish capacity. So this is your permanent spaces at your school. Ashton is at 734, Lakeview 594, Sarasota Middle 1406, and the new Sky Ranch will be 1382. The current number of portables on these campuses, we have 36 at Ashton, 15 at Lakeview, and eight at Sarasota Middle. The data is based on, the student data is based on this year's 10-day count. That was the most recent data we had available to present to the team. And these are the students living in the zone for each of these schools. We have to take into account the students living in the zone, because those students could attend that school at any time. So for Ashton, there were 1,018 students living in the zone as of the 10-day count, 994 at Lakeview, and 1,522 at Sarasota Middle. The percent utilization based on those resident students is actually taking your permanent fish capacity and then dividing it by, excuse me, the number of students. So you have a 30, 139% at Ashton, 167% at Lakeview, and 108% at Sarasota Middle. When we look at the new boundary, and apply that to the schools, the students remaining after the rebalance, you'd have 667 at Ashton, 669 at Lakeview, and 1,073 at Sarasota Middle. The total of students rebalanced to the new school would be 414 from Ashton, 324 from Lakeview, 449 from Sarasota Middle, giving us a total of 1187 to the Sky Ranch K-8. So your projected utilization for these schools after the rebalance, you'd have 91% at Ashton, 113% at Lakeview, 76% at Sarasota. And your level of service for Sky Ranch opening would be 86%. And you'd be reducing your portables, eliminating them at Ashton, going down to about four at Lakeview, and eliminating them at Sarasota. And then looking at, we had transportation, look at the current and projected costs and ride times. And there was a minimal difference of $17,271 for the cost, and just a two-minute change in the ride time.
Once again, the level, once again, one of the reasons the errors are there is to make sure you, the parameters in which we must look at is relieving capacity at the schools and the level of service. So as we cut the, as we cut, as we ran the analysis for this scenario one, the data that presented for scenario one was as follows. So we will move on to scenario two, if you would like to walk back over to scenario two, and we'll switch back to the map.
So scenario two basically follows the same boundary line, except it cuts off at Honorre to the west, rather than the Legacy Trail. So we start at Honorre, follow it east along State Road 72. Again, this is the same boundary to the south, and then the same boundary to the south at Ashton, cutting off at Honorre to the north.
So scenario, scenario two's boundary was just a little bit different. And so when you run the analysis for that, the following data exists, exists for scenario two.
So I'm not going to go over the, the first few columns again, because it's the same data. But for this scenario, when we apply the new boundary, the students remaining after the rebalance, you would have 855 at Ashton, 669 again at Lakeview, and 1343 at Sarasota, rebalancing 222, 226 students from Ashton to the new K-8, 324 from Lakeview, and 179 from Sarasota Middle, giving us a total of 729 students to open the new school. The projected utilization or level of service, we now have 116 at Ashton, 113 at Lakeview, 96 at Sarasota, and only opening Sky Ranch at a 53% level of service. And we would now have seven portables left at Ashton, four, again, at Lakeview, none at Sarasota Middle. And looking again at those transportation costs and ride times, they, they were pretty much the same as, as the transportation department had put them together. It is, it's basically the same route, because it would follow that Honorre north to Clark.
And remember, there's, there's a radius for eligible transportation. So anything over 1.5 miles or out, it didn't change that much between scenario one and scenario two. So these are, once again, those are projected numbers. So those were the first two that were presented originally. And then you brought a third, a third scenario.
Yes. The third scenario was the, the scenario that the boundary advisory committee brought to us, and we and we looked at. So, I'll show you what that looks like. So, that's actually starting, oh, forgot about it, thank you. Starting at I-75 at Proctor. So, we're going a little north here along Proctor, and then following Proctor down to State Road 72, and again, out to the southern boundary of existing for Lakeview and Sarasota Middle, and then ending at the interstate and north again up to Proctor. Now, what this scenario does as well is it takes this portion at, sorry, this, up here at Bee Ridge, east to Cattlemen, down to Proctor, Proctor along Clark, Clark, sorry, down to Sawyer, and then out. And this area here would be redistricted to Wilkinson from Ashton.
And back to the PowerPoint, if you could. There you go.
Okay. And that's how it would look at the middle school level. And the data behind that, again, the data is the same, except now we added Wilkinson into the conversation, and Wilkinson has a permanent fish capacity of 786 student stations. They currently do not have any portables on their campus. They currently have, or at the 10-day count, they had 668 students living within their zone, which was an 85% utilization. After the rebalance, we'd have 769 students at Ashton, 575 at Lakeview, now we would have 991 at Wilkinson, because those 323 students that are being rebalanced from Ashton are now being rebalanced to Wilkinson rather than the K8. And then, we have 1,275 left at Sarasota Middle. So, your projected utilizations are 105% for Ashton, 97% for Lakeview. We now have Wilkinson at 126%, Sarah Middle at 91%, and we're only opening Sky Ranch School with 666 students, or 48% utilization. We have about two portables that would have to remain on the Ashton campus. We would eliminate portables at Lakeview, and now we would have to add portables at Wilkinson. And then, again, we had Transportation Department look at the cost and ride times. The current cost for this scenario is $565,855.50, with a projected cost of $565,812. Again, so the difference again is nominal, and the ride time is nominal as well, with an additional of 2 minutes.
So, I think it's important to note that when you draw, when we make these changes to these boundaries and the student data, the geocoded students that are within that, the plat, like I said, there's only so many ways you can cut this data up. But through the process, there were additional scenarios that were analyzed. Actually, the Boundary Advisory Committee wanted to continue to look for options that we could run the data set through. And so, there are, we won't talk long on these, they're available, they're public on the minutes as well as here, but the additional scenarios analyzed, there were four additional ones. And just briefly, I will state that, you know, that we would run any particular scenario that was requested, they were either feasible or not feasible based on meeting one sum or all of the following justification. So, again, reducing capacity, real briefly, reducing capacity, didn't take care of the acceptable level of service, or they didn't meet the majority of the statutory primary variables and operational variables we have to look at when we redraw lines. So, one of those five things, where it just simply didn't align with best practice. It's not best practice to, you know, open up a school and not have the level of service that we need for that. But all the data, everything that was asked to be presented was run. The team ran those data scenarios. It was presented again at the Boundary Advisory publicly with them to show how the data set came out. So, 3.1, I'll let Ms. Comanati talk briefly about that, and you'll see why that one was not feasible.
So, this scenario had students, sorry. The top part in green would be Lakeview Zone, the blue would be Ashton Zone, and the red would be the new K8. So, the new K8 would cut off at the interstate and go north and to the northern boundary of Lakeview, and now having a portion of Lakeview being redistricted to Ashton.
And the results of that?
And the results of that would only result in 549 students for the new K8 at a 40% capacity. And it would leave, still leave, Lakeview and Ashton overcapacity.
So, 3.2?
So, the next three scenarios are all pretty similar. There's just a few different variables between them, so I won't go into them that much. But this adds, and you'll see this little kind of area to the east, this kind of odd-shaped, that's actually a proposed village within the High Hat Ranch development, so it's not even existing at this point. And I wouldn't consider that a natural boundary, just because it's proposed, it's not even, hasn't been completely approved yet for development. So, we looked into this, and there are some differences in here in these three remaining ones, and I'll just go through them briefly. But this leaves a 47% capacity for the new K8, which was not feasible. 3.3 takes that same area, which we determined would not work, because it's not, it's not an existing area yet. That would leave us at 42% capacity for the new K8. And then, 3.4 was a 38% capacity. So, these were all considered not feasible for various reasons.
And once again, these were presented publicly to the Boundary Advisory Committee, because, like I said, any request that was asked of the planning team, they actually ran the data on it, and we wanted to make sure that we were transparent with presenting that data. So, let's talk about what happened when we go with the process. The third and final meeting was actually a working committee meeting. It wasn't like a typical meeting, but it was, it was a working, it was a working meeting, where the teams would score each scenario. Let them come up, let them decide whether a scenario met variables or not. So, basically, there was a rubric that was produced. The rubric looks like this. It actually is, the rubric is aligned with the primary variables that are required by statute, and some operational and some best practice things for level of service. They were giving, they were given the rubric, they were given the map that accompanied that, as well as the data charts that accompanied that. And what we asked each team to do was rate each scenario, whether yes, yes, they felt it met that objective, or no, it did not. So, they rated them, they scored them, and from the scores, you know, they could come up with consensus on a ranking of the three feasible that were remaining to be considered. So, with that said, we also had, in the rubric, there were directions, that there was a tie between two variables, and I do want to, I mean, two scenarios. I do want to say this, Scenario 1 and Scenario 2, some of the committees, you'll see, they were scored, they were scored the same. A lot of them met the, they felt met the primary variables. So, that's good. That means you at least had two strong feasible opportunities. But anyway, that's the rubric. The rubric was there, they did that, they looked the results for each team. And in the event of a tie, they were to then go to look at the chart data to determine, you know, which, if two scenarios tied, which scenario best met the primary and operational variables, which scenario best met the needs of the district and the level of service to open Sky Ranch. So, that was the team activity that they did. The Team 1 scoring, Team 1 was that Sarasota Middle school team. I broke this out by individual scenarios, just so the community could see it. This information's also all online. So, Team 1 scored Scenario 1. At the bottom there, you can see Scenario 1 was a 12, and they had that data available to them. So, Team 1 scored Scenario 1 a 12. Team 1 also scored Scenario 2 a 12. So, they had a tie. The 3 was scored an 8. So, they were 12, 12, and 8. And since they had a tie, they had to come up with a final ranking, or come up with consensus as a group, what they felt. Their final ranking for Team 1 Sarasota Middle was, just as it's presented, Scenario 1 was the first, Scenario 2 was ranked 2, Scenario 3 was ranked 3 in that particular team. Same with Team 2. Team 2 goes, that's the Lakeview Elementary School team. So, they had a 9 on Scenario 1. They scored Scenario 2 a 9, so also a tie. And Scenario 3, they scored a 6. So, 9, 9, 6. So, they had to get together, do consensus, come up with a ranking of what they felt was it. They too felt that Scenario 1, Scenario 2, and Scenario 3 best met the variables needed and the level of service, and reduced overcapacity in the best option for Team 2. So, that was their ranking. Team 3 was the Ashton Elementary School team. They ranked Scenario 1 9 points, they ranked Scenario 2 10 points, and they ranked Scenario 3 9 points. So, they two had a tie between 2 and 3. So, they went to look at consensus and compared the data to what they felt. They came to consensus, and their ranking was as follows. They ranked, their number one ranked scenario was number 2, their number two scenario was number 3, and Scenario 3, and their third rank was Scenario 1. So, 2, 3, 1 in that perspective. So, that was the, so the summary of that, we then, we did all this publicly at the last meeting. We actually posted the results live as they came up. So, the Team 1 ranking, 2 ranking, 3 ranking, all the scores were there, it was transparent. The last slide in the orange there is just the frequency. So, we had two of the three teams ranked number, Scenario 1 as the top scenario, and we had one team rank Scenario 2 as the top scenario. So, based on that, based on the work of the committee, and it's tough work, I mean, the Boundary Advisory Committee and those that participated on that, it's, you know, it's difficult sometimes to look at the objective nature of what the work is, and what's in the best interest of all kids, and what's in the best interest of the district long term. So, since two of the three Advisory Committee teams ranked Scenario 1 as the top ranked scenario, it would be our recommendation to the superintendent and to offer to you for consideration, is that Scenario 1 is this recommended scenario. Not only does it best meet the primary operational and legal variables associated with redistricting, it also honors the collaborative result of the Boundary Advisory Committee. So, and not to mention that, again, the planning team must bring forth feasible options that meet board policy, Florida statute, and make sure that we have an effective level of service to do that. And they did that. So, with that said, that's the collective result and recommendation of the board, I mean, excuse me, of the committee and the district. All the district admin team is in agreement with that as well, and that's our recommendation to the superintendent. Now, once the, our recommendation's given to the superintendent, we had guidelines for choice. Guidelines for choice were covered in our Boundary Advisory Committee meetings. It's public, they're in the minutes, you can see. I'm going to ask at this time Denise and Millie to come up to talk, they run our school choice and accountability, and they will talk about the school choice options. I will say this before we start. Another parameter that we're confined by when we're talking about moving from a K5 to a K5, or a K5 to a K8, is sometimes you're confined by your existing board policy. If you remember, it started, Dr. Johnson started out telling you that by policy, by school board policy, we have some things in place now that allow the student at the top grade to remain, the fifth grader can remain. You have policy that says the eighth grader can remain. Another confinement of the process is that there's Florida statute, there's Florida law exists for choice, that says any student that is currently in a choice assignment by law can remain at that site through the highest grade that that site offers. And that's not just, that's law, that's Florida law. So, with that said, some of the confinements of that is part of the guidelines for choice. So, I'm going to ask the team to talk about everything that was discussed and options for parents.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Millie and I will just answer a few questions about choice. As part of the whole process, we were invited in to review the legislation and our own policies on choice, to make sure that we were following the guidelines. We were there at the meetings as well, because parents were asking us questions. So, the next couple of slides, you're going to see frequent questions and things that we thought relevant to this process.
So, the first question really is just, the parents want to know, what's going to happen if my students are rezoned or redistricted? Will they be allowed to remain? And so, that really depends. I want to remind everybody that this school is opening in a phased approach. And, you know, as Dr. Kemp just mentioned, we do have some board policy that guides us in these discussions. So, the younger grade levels, if they are rezoned, would be expected to attend the new school. But some of the upper grade levels, because of the phased approach and the board policy, would be permitted to remain at their current school. Specifically, in the elementary school, it would be the current fourth graders, who would be fifth graders in their last year at that elementary school next year.
So, just mentioning that, we just wanted to bring this reminder up, that this is a K5 to a, this is not a K5 to a K5, rebalancing or redistricting. It's a K5 to a K8. So, I think as a parent, and parents should think about, that do you want your fourth grader to remain at that school while many of, or most of his cohort is going on to the new school? Those are the kids he knows, that's where the social relationships are. So, parents may want to stay, but then think about, maybe they'd be better off part of going with their cohort.
Absolutely. And I can tell this board and the public that in our office, we have been receiving calls about the excitement for this new school for years. Parents are very excited, and they want to know if their neighborhood is going to be zoned. So, I do anticipate that some families will absolutely choose to go ahead and make the transition now. All right. So, the next questions that we received a lot from the community were basically, what's going to happen if my student is on choice? So, I think we already answered number one, which was, will redistricted middle schools be permitted to remain? And that is yes, because of that phased approach. But if my current student is at one of these schools that is being impacted on choice, if they've won that seat in the lottery, the statute says they are allowed to remain at that school through the highest grade level offered. So, we will certainly honor that choice, or honor that statute. However, again, if that family so chooses to move into the new school, because it is their new zone, then that would be their choice. And then, outside, and I know we've talked about this here before, but outside of traditional school choice, what is in law, Sarasota County offers another opportunity called reassignment. In a lot of counties, it's maybe called hardship, or it has many names. But basically, it's another opportunity after that traditional choice window, to look at where we may still have remaining seats, and how can we maybe offer those to some additional families that are looking for options? And so, the next question is, is if my student is on reassignment, that local policy, and they're being, would they be permitted to stay at one of these schools that is being impacted? And that answer is that our current procedures do say that those students may also remain at that school through the highest level offered, and that was purposeful, that was meant to mimic what's in law about the choice lottery. The next question is, if I am rezoned, so if I am impacted by this change, may I apply for choice to remain at my current school? And that, the answer is yes, they are absolutely allowed to apply. Every resident in the state of Florida is permitted to apply, but the question is whether or not, what the available capacity will be after these decisions are made, and that is something we review regularly. So, the placements through choice will be completely contingent upon what is the remaining If my child is remaining at the current school, will a younger sibling be permitted to attend? And this is certainly a question we get a lot, and this is also, it depends, and they're absolutely permitted to apply, and we will follow those procedures. It is always our goal... It is always our goal to keep siblings together, but we also always have to be mindful of capacity and staffing.
So most of the choice questions, most of those choice questions that surfaced were addressed. Again, on the capacity thing, where there's available capacity, remember by law, we must maintain capacity at all the schools, all those impacted schools, that if any of the kids that are in that zone are on to go somewhere else, they go to one of our schools for choice, or if they go to a charter school, or even if it's a private school, and they're within that zone, we always have to reserve capacity in the instance that they all wanted to come back to the resident zone. So monitoring capacities is really important. I will also say this to you, though, it's not necessarily applying in this case. Typically, in these types of, when we rebalance, I like to call it rebalancing, because you're balancing capacities. But when you're talking about redistricting, rebalancing, the process, when you're talking about rebalancing, it absolutely matters that we look at every particular scenario that we can, and we try to keep everyone together where we can, and we try to honor what can be done. But typically, when we rebalance, in most districts, the impacted schools, any school that's impacted by the redistricting, is usually closed for open enrollment. Doesn't apply to this case, this year, it's not in our policy. But that's something you might want to consider, because we're going to be doing this more and more in the future, coming up with Wellen Park, and then Garden, the Garden Elementary right after that. But typically, open enrollment is not available to any impacted school in a redistrict or rebalance, because you have to let things settle to determine who's actually staying, going where. So usually, they're trying to protect it for you, the new school, as well as the impacted schools. That is not our, not the policy right now, but as we move forward with this, and we have to look at managing capacity at a 90% threshold at our schools, would be the threshold that we would look at, basically, as Millie said, if it's, it depends. If the school has more than, if the school's at 90% capacity or higher, that's, the decision would be that that school would not be available for open enrollment beyond what's already there. If a school was below 90% on that threshold, then there would be opportunities for them to apply through the appropriate processes to be considered for placement at that school. So that's something that, that's some policy things that we need to look at, possibly moving forward. And going back to the PowerPoint, I will say to you just, I will not, I will not go through all these, I've gone through these before, they're also public record, there was frequently asked questions. We wanted to document every question that came to us. And it's available on the website. On the minutes of the last, on the October 2nd meeting, the frequently asked questions are there. The answers to the questions are all available. Everything from, you know, one of the first questions, well, why isn't the school opening K-8 all at one time? Why aren't you doing it all at one time? Well, Millie and Denise just indicated to you, I mean, we're kind of boxed in by our own policy, school board policy with that, with protecting top grades, as well as Florida statute with choice. So, you know, when you look at the questions, and you look at the answer, and it's available to the public, it's available on the website, all the questions that were asked, everything was how, you know, they talked to us about the data, you know, talks about 10-day counts, you know. It also talked about athletic activities, how was that going to impact, if it was going to be phased in? Our middle, and Dr. Johnson addressed, he actually addressed that on the athletics, I think it's worth mentioning there.
No, please. So I was fortunate to have a meeting with Mrs. Hannon and Mr. Slaton, our Director of Athletics. So we will be having all athletic offerings at K through 8 when it opens. So we will have kids, they will have the opportunity, from golf, to volleyball, to basketball, to participate in middle school athletics.
Same with, same question we had often received, you know, since we're phasing it, and we'd have the same comprehensive academic programs.
And yes, for comprehensive programs as well, as well as electives, they will also have those offerings as well.
All right, there you go. So we take, I mean, you can see these questions, like I said, I'm not going over every one of them, you know, there was lots of questions about, you know, what happened to previous school sites, you know, what's coming up in the future. There was questions regarding transportation and safety of a K-8. You know, we already have a K-8 in place with Laurel and Colmas, and we, you know, we have procedures in place with that. How were the transportation times and costs calculated? We answered all that. So when you look at these FAQs, they're there, available for you. The website, our communication team put together, was outstanding. It provided a portable for, a portable, a portal, a portal for any of the individuals that wanted to submit a comment, or they wanted a suggestion, or ask a question, they could do that, and we would respond, and we'd post everything online. There was a question about will, you know, will the scoring of the committee be presented to the Board? Absolutely, we did that. And also, they wanted to know if the work of the Boundary Advisory Committee was completed at that time, after the October 2nd meeting, after they did their work, going through that. The Boundary Advisory Committee is completed at this time. So based on their recommendations, that's what we provide to you. And we would like to offer that recommendation to the superintendent, to the Board. So with that said, we'll open it up for any of your questions that you might have.
Yeah, real quick, if I could, just for the Board, because I've heard from some different people. So one thing is, based on Scenario 1, as the recommendation, you would not be able to, because it's over 90% capacity based on policy, you would not be able to school choice back to Ashton, Lakeview, or Sarasota Middle. But you would be under capacity of the 90%. So if a family did want to go to school choice, go to Sky, because it's a beautiful, I mean, it's a crazy nice place out there, and lots of space. So if you were a parent at Tatum Ridge, let's say, and you were in that area, because it is right down the street, then you could technically school choice in. So the first 3, you would be out, but you could technically, when it opens, since it's under the policy of the 90%, you could choice in for Sky, as long as it was K through 6, based upon the staggered opening, correct?
So I just want to remind you that the numbers that were on the screen were based on the students living in the zone, not necessarily the students in attendance. And so when we review that, those numbers, well, right now, as we begin to review them, we review projected numbers based on actual student enrollment. And then we will review them again before school opens. So that's really, I don't have a magic ball, the numbers are really hard. We do a good job at projecting them based on past trends, but until we see what those registrations look like coming in, we won't truly know. But the 90% is based on student enrollment.
So would that window, oh, go ahead. Would that, the window then, whatever was determination, would be open under the choice window normally?
Yeah, so we always let people apply, and this hasn't always been the case, so let me clarify this. With our new student information system, the way it works is, even if there aren't necessarily seats available, parents have the ability to apply. And if there isn't current capacity, they're automatically waitlisted. And so then we would maintain that waitlist. And then if capacity were to open up later, then we would offer them the opportunity of taking that seat.
That's what I wanted to make sure that we shared, and that includes all of the schools. So including Ashton, or Sky Ranch, if they put in, and they're waitlisted, and then all of a sudden, we run the 10-day count, maybe people have moved out of the area, and it opens up, they would have the opportunity to go back and attend the school.
And that would be the maximum, technically, what you're looking at now, based on the total amount of kids that live in there, based on the calculations. And obviously, we know that there are kids there that go to charters, they go to private, they go to different others. So there is a, the reason I brought this up is, I've heard, is there's a possibility there could be a choice window open up for those schools, based upon the total counts.
That's right, for any choice.
So the other question I have, and this is also brought up too, is in reference to athletics, choir, band. Since it's a K through 6 opening, choir, band, and athletics, they would then be able to still participate. So as an example, it really is middle school. So if I was in choir at middle school, and I was now at Sky, I could still go to my district, well, my, I would still be able to go back to Sarasota Middle School to be able to participate. So, because I know, like, basketball, it's really, it's what, 7th and 8th grade? So you kind of follow what I'm saying, so I'm, you know what I'm saying, so it may not have any effect. So that's what I'm saying, is if you could get classification, because that's what I'm asking, well, my child is being this, or she was going to go to this, or he was going to go to this, but now it's not being offered. That's what you hear, well, now it's not being offered, so now they're not going to be able to participate. So that's kind of what I'm asking.
No, great question. The difference is, we will be offering all of those. So chorus, band, and athletics. So if they transition from 5th grade to 6th grade to Sky Ranch, from Lakeview, or Ashton, or come from another school, they will have the opportunity for those activities.
So that will be available, same consistency for all district schools, will be the same at Sky, so there'll be no negative impact, because that's one of the questions that I keep hearing, well, we're going to have to go there, and now my child won't be able to be in this, or won't be able to do that.
No, they'll have the opportunity now, being competitive serves a different question, right? When you're opening up a new school, but they will 100% have the opportunity. That was one of the things we wanted to make sure, and we expressed this during the Boundary Advisory Committee meetings, that when we are transitioning, opening up a new school, and yes, it's been a while, our goal is still to have the same level of service. And so being able to meet with Mr. Slaton, and also with Mrs. Hartvixen, who is over our visual performing arts, we wanted to make sure we still have the same exact opportunities as if you were going to Sarasota Middle, or even for our elementary, if you were staying in elementary level as well.
And I have one other thing, so in reference to, I know, because unfortunately, due to all of the storms we've had, I know, as mentioned in the beginning, so they will have a generator capacity in order to run that from the opening at Sky Ranch.
That is correct. There is a generator plan for the shelter preparations at Sky Ranch.
And I think that is, moving forward, I think that should be at every single school as we move forward, as they should have that capacity to be able to have generators, to be able to provide that for our families that are going to be coming in there, that are going to need those services, because you don't know how long it's going to be, potentially.
And I would just clarify, if it is designated as a shelter, not all our schools are built to that standard, but if they are, we would absolutely want to build that generator as a part of that process.
Ms. Marinelli, Mr. Edwards?
I do, thank you. Not so much questions, observations, comments. I think because Sarasota, before we had the hurricanes, was growing so rapidly, our schools, the elementary, they're full. And I empathize, and I understand a parent's perspective of, I love Ashton, they have wonderful teachers. I love Lakeview, they have wonderful teachers, I don't want my child to go. But because they are so overcapacity, and looking at the scenarios, and then the ones that were in addition, they make no sense to me, because you've got, if you go to Wilkinson, then you're putting Wilkinson way over, and you're giving them from no, basically, the portables to 11. And then Ashton still has portables, Lakeview's going to have portables, and we don't want portables. So it's a very difficult decision, but I want to compliment the district team, the school teams, the parent teams, for recommending the scenarios, because I know what scenario that, I mean, I'm going to listen to parents if they send emails or everything, but I understand the process, and how it is, we have, our schools are overcapacity. And if anybody drives by there, when you see Ashton, and it's just a field of portables, you see Tatum Ridge, you've got portables, you've got Southside, who had a new wing built years ago, portables, which were never supposed to be there, you've got them everywhere. And that's not how we want our schools to look. So I know it's very difficult, but I think the new school, Sky Ranch, is going to be just fabulous. And I hope parents will be open-minded and go look at the school, and to see what the offerings are going to be at a school like that. I've talked to Mrs. Hannon, and she, I think she's a great principal that's going to open that school. She's, you can tell the enthusiasm, and everything that's going to make that transition go well for students, because that's what we're there for. And I don't even think people realize that we have staff that have to share rooms, we have counselors, 2 counselors in an office, which is not ideal. You have people that have to go test, sometimes it was a closet. You know, so we are, we're, some of our schools, they're bursting, so we need to address that. And I agree with addressing our current policies, because we're going to be having new schools be built. So it's going to, we need to stay ahead of that, knowing, instead of being behind and trying to make policy changes, we need to get in front of that. So I think through the, our Superintendent Connor, he can start on that and direct whomever to look at that, because I think, I would much rather be ahead of the curve than trying to play catch-up. Because in the past, the district has been trying, we've always played catch-up. So, but I-
I appreciate, I mean, the team appreciates that, your comments. I will tell you, it's very, very difficult, there's, you pointed out, there's a lot of moving parts, and a lot of parameters that have to go into what we're looking at. It's, though redistricting or rebalancing, I call it, is always tough, it's a little bit easier when you get to open a new school. I mean, there's, I mean, I've been through processes before, where you have to rebalance, and you're not opening a new school, you're just balancing capacities, because it's our responsibility to operate as reliably and efficiently as it can. But at least, we're lucky, we're fortunate to be able to be opening a new school. Sometimes in these processes, they can, it's difficult, it gets, people see things one way, and just how it impacts their child. The role of the team, and the Boundary Advisory Committees, and the Board is to do what's in the best interest of all kids in the long term of the district. It's tough, it is a challenge, it's never easy. It's always, you know, we look for every opportunity we can to make it the best we can, based on that particular data set. And I will say this, sometimes the data set presents lots of great options, sometimes the data set that is fixed based on where children are geocoded in the system makes it hard. I mean, it, sometimes, sometimes one, like this, in this instance, this is a relatively straightforward process, one rose to the top through the data, one rose through the top automatically. There's sometimes that doesn't happen. And policy's a great conversation, because we're going to have to look at that on the next one. This one has been, this one is relatively straightforward compared to what the opportunities to serve are going to be in the future with, when we look at the rebalancing for Wellen Park, starting this upcoming year.
Well, and like I said, I do commend the teams, and I, because I know it's not easy. And I think just to know that we, it is an emotional experience, so when parents come and don't want their child to leave, I think it's very important, and I'm not saying this doesn't happen, but to listen, to empathize, and, but still to say, you know, this is really the way it has to be. It doesn't mean that maybe, because you don't know for sure, but this is the way it has to be, and-
Right, we're open in August 25, you know, no matter what.
Yep, that's going to be here before we even blink an eye, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. Let me start by saying that I've been out to Sky Ranch several times, and I've been, seen the tour that our Superintendent was on. It's going to be absolutely an outstanding environment, it's state-of-the-art. I cannot stress enough, it's how incredible being a student at that school, and a family at that school will be. I share the feelings of our Principal Choice, she's amazing, she's had incredible insights that have affected minutia, right up to design, and finishing pieces in construction, and just, it's, I can't stress enough how incredible the environment is. The next piece of that is, I come to mind when I'm flying, and when they, when you're exiting the plane, and they say, we realize you have your choice of carriers today, we thank you for flying here. I'm going to apply that to this conversation, because at the end of the day, again, I compliment the amount of time and effort, and I sat in on our one conversation prior to today, and it's time-consuming and complicated. But at the end of the day, our state has really put us in a position where parents have choice. And if we're not listening, if we're not hearing, and I know there's a parent committee here, but I also want to point out that today is the first time that we're having a public conversation about it, other than the publicly noticed, and all of that is in. But I will tell you that families are unaware this is happening. This is the first time, a lot of them will actually hear it today, even though it was on the website. So I am looking forward to hearing from families here regarding this conversation, and my only recommendation, and I'm going to kind of just, and by the way, proactive on policies, sign me up, yep. But I'm going to say, I'm not real comfortable after the public hearing on the 19th to go straight to a vote. I really am not. It's, I have that conversation with this Board all the time, about going from a workshop to a vote, I'm not comfortable. And so my suggestion is that we have time between now and the next Board meeting to hear, between now and the 19th, we're going to hear from the public on the 19th, and I think at least this Board member would still like to take that time and digest it, and have another time period to have it- another time period to have it go for vote. I don't think an extra board meeting is too much to ask.
And thank you, Mr. Edwards. And I, and I, as one of the things moving forward, I think that that is something that's also very important. I mean, it may not ultimately change the decision, but I think that, you know, there's really, when you start talking about people who have purchased homes in those areas for, for the substantial amount of money it takes, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to be that quick in order to make sure the decision, because we are obviously affecting them. I will say in reference to the choice piece, you know, as a district, and I've talked to the superintendent Connor about this and Dr. Kemp plenty of times, you know, we're gonna be, we're gonna be better by far than the choice at charters, and we're gonna be bringing the students back, and that's something that I know that, that we've been focused on, and I talked to him about it, because you're not gonna get this, you're not gonna get that school at, you pick it. That, like you said, that's, I go by there every day, that is, that's, that is gonna be a heck of a place, as well as all new construction is gonna be, whether it's gonna be the Welland Park, whether it's gonna be at Waterside at some point. That's gonna be our competitive advantage in order to pull those kids in, I truly believe it, because you look at the staff, you just look at their referendum approval, which we haven't talked about, you look at what our community's looking, you look at, we've gone up to really as number two, and, you know, you see those things, and this is moving, and that's where I'm excited, because I think they're not gonna compete with us. But I do agree with you on some of these things, to have the workshop or have the, because you can't turn around and go, okay, now we hear you at the board meeting, but we still have to make our decision. So I would agree on certain votes, I think that that is prudent for us to be able to wait, to be able to take that in, because I did get a lot of heartfelt emails in reference to this, that they're being displaced, and that they bought homes specifically to go there. And my, my three children, two went to Ashton, one went to Lakeview, all three of them went to Sarasota Middle, so I totally feel their pain out there, and that, that's, you know, when you start looking for purchasing, I mean, I know when superintendent Connor moved here, everybody wants to be, and, you know, everybody's gonna look at to where they're ultimately going to reside. So I know that this is very difficult, but what I want to say is, what I take away is a couple of things. One is, I truly appreciate the transparency of the process, because by doing those things, it allows us, and everybody can see it. So obviously, the next, as you talk about Welland Park, and we're talking about Venice High School, it's gonna be very difficult. But we need to make sure, and as we move forward, I think this is the first time, Dr. Kemp, that we've used this kind of process. So that turns into where we can build on this for this one, for the next one, and we can keep going forward to make it more efficient, the transparency in the process. And to Mr. Edwards' points, I agree, there are still a lot of parents out there that don't have any idea that this is going to happen, but at least now, we bring that to their attention, and that they could come in, that we can make a vote. But the other thing I take away from this, I'm very, very empathetic to the parents, you know, that are gonna have to move over there, but starting something new is, is a great opportunity. It's a great opportunity, you know, it's just like when they were, I'll just bring it one little thing, like when they were rebuilding Riverview, all we heard about was the architecture at Riverview. I went to school there. It flooded every day when it rained. You wouldn't ever use the bathrooms on the first floor. The architecture was great, but it's not Riverview that you have now, which is incredible. So as I say that, is, I totally have empathy for the parents that may end up getting displaced, such as, you know, you can pick Village Walk, there's quite a few around there. But I know as a district superintendent, and you guys, thank you for the process, and I know that they're gonna be well taken care of out there, and that they're gonna be going to, we're putting them somewhere that we know we're gonna be proud of doing, but I really thank you for the process, because as a board member, it makes it easier for us to a certain degree to see how you come up with the decision-making, so thank you.
If I can, I just wanna echo something Mr. Edwards said. He's, he's right, we really need to look at capacities, not just when we're, not that we want to volunteer for re-districting balancing just because, but sometimes when you have lower enrolled schools, and then you have some schools that are over, that can impact the choice ability. And I do, I do think we're gonna, we are the premier system in the area, I do think that we need to prepare ourselves to be in a position to be able to accept open enrollment and choice when we can. Our capacities have to be monitored to do that. We have to continually look at enrollment and capacities, and what we can do to make it available, to make, to make our premier services available to someone who's pursuing choice. So I agree with that, that we need to look, we do need to look at capacities moving forward, even when we're not building a school. And you are 100% correct, the next one with Welland Park, which is not necessarily, only one high school is impacted on that one, that's gonna be a very difficult, long process, and it starts soon as, starts in January for us to start getting organized with that. So I do appreciate your comments, and we have to have a process in place. At the end of the day, you've invested a lot of money and time and on these schools, and we have to be able to have a level of service that's gonna make it work. We also, this is what I mean when you heard me say in previous workshops, we can do anything, we just can't do everything. We've gotta be smart in how we're handling our capital programs, we gotta look at classroom additions where we can, as opposed to just a brand-new build, just not only based on cost, but just where we can look at classroom additions. That might have us look at some additional policies, and what I call scrimmage, scrimmage on, do we need, I mean, the stance we've taken on school size and things of that nature, we're just not in a position to build $90 million elementary schools two, three miles apart. So we have to be smart, we have to balance capacities, and I think that's a great, that's a great suggestion.
And it's nothing just at one high school, I know we have students in Eggwood that are going to Lemon Bay High School, which is in Charlotte County. So it's gonna affect a lot of different people, I just, as again, is, as we go forward in the process, I think that the more we can do, and the more that we can be open, is the better that it is, and that it does give parents a lot of opportunities to choice, to do the things, as long as the capacity is there, because there's nobody, I assure, from a board perspective, nobody has been to a campus, as Ms. Marinelli said, Mr. Edwards, and see 36 portables sitting in the back, not one kid wants to be back there, because they feel like they're being excluded. And I think that's also for the teachers too, for our staff, to make them feel part, and you really get into the, you know, would you really get into the safety aspect of it, because I get questions about that all the time. So it just becomes, it just, it's a win-win across the board, as, as, you know, it's been said before. So with that, superintendent Connor, any more comments?
Yeah, I just, again, want to thank the team, as you can see, this is a very detailed process, I appreciate all the hard work that goes into it, all the way from the district website, the boundary committees, all of the parents who've been involved in this, it really is meticulously, it's detailed, and there's a lot of nuance that happens. In terms of my recommendation, I'm gonna be recommending to the board scenario one moving forward. I'm also gonna be recommending that we do hold a public hearing. I look to the board for direction, it's my recommendation that we move for approval sooner than later, just because as we, we've got to, we've got to start communicating what this is, change is going to be as quickly as possible. But I do recognize that if there is an appetite, that we want to separate that, that's not typically practiced, but it obviously can be, in terms of separation between the public hearing and when we make the official vote. There's also an option that you could schedule both of those at the same day, then after public comment, if there, for some reason, the board feels that we need to move that to another meeting, at that time, you can make that decision. So I'll leave it up to the board for that. My recommendation is that we do scenario one, we have our public hearing on the 19th, we move for approval on the 19th, but I'll look to the direction of the board and the will of the board, and we'll make any adjustments as necessary.
Board member comments in reference to that? Ms. Marinelli?
Well, I, I have to respect, you know, what, what the team and what you recommend. I think I would suggest if, if we have a tremendous amount of the public comment, and it's divisive, that we do take a look, so we can hash it out, that maybe we have to wait one more board meeting, but I think, let's just see how that goes, because I don't want to give any parent or the public the impression that we are not listening, and that we don't have the empathy of having to move their child. So if we can do it, then that's okay, but if we could, we'll just play it by ear, if we have to wait one more, but I also, I know what that timeline is, and the stress that that puts on even two weeks of moving the process forward of opening a school, because that is a, that's a big, big endeavor.
I'd also offer to, as a recommendation too, if that is the case, that we want to move approval, we could do, we could do a special call board meeting as well, so it doesn't necessarily have to wait through all the way to the next regular board meeting.
See, I'm okay with that, I'm, I'm open, just so we get the input, and I'm open, and I'll leave that to the discussion during that time. If we have to call a special meeting, and we come in here, then we'll do it, because this is one of the biggest decisions we're gonna be making that's gonna be affecting our families and our kids.
So maybe the recommendation is, Mr. Edwards, if, and we'd have to obviously have the other board members be able to chime in, I know that Ms. Barker would be taking on the 19th, so maybe as we have the public hearing on the 19th, we call for a special meeting right before Thanksgiving break for the vote, and that would give us a little, give us an opportunity to be able to look at that, which may be something that's, because again, with Ms. Barker coming on, I want to make sure that she'll be up to speed, I know she's been attending, but it'd be a lot for a very first meeting.
I think it's wise to acknowledge Ms. Barker, and in such a significant vote on her first day, so, so I think that, that's wise. As a compromise, I think the, the special meeting might, might be a compromise. I have to honestly say that, I hear this all the time, I know our website is so robust, and I know that we have made incredible leaps and bounds in terms of getting information onto the website and making it available to our parents and our public. But I know parents are just working and driving kids to after-school programs, and they're, and when they have five minutes, they're not gonna say, hey, you know what, let me pop in and look at that website and see what, what's going on. So that's, that's what I hear all the time, and it's, for me personally, not enough to say it's been on the website. It really, it's, and it's empathetic to know that our parents are in that situation, and all I'm really trying to ask for is a little consideration for, I need to hear from them if for some reason, they're, everyone's yippee-skippee, because I started my conversation by saying, you should want to go to that school, because it's the best thing happening, it's got a great principal, it's state-of-the-art, if I had a choice, I'd be going there. So I started it that way, but it's a very emotional conversation, and I really just want to give enough time to make sure that after it's been in a workshop, and then we have a public hearing, that it's, that people have enough time, and we've had enough time to absorb that information.
So moving forward, if it's, if it's, obviously, I know Ms. Ziegler unfortunately could be here, and Mr. Rose couldn't be here, do, would you work towards allowing me to be able to set something up after the 19th, we'll do the public hearing, we'll make sure that it gets out to all the parents, and then we'll have a special meeting that we'll be able to attend prior to breaking for Thanksgiving?
Yes, and that, we have statutory requirements as well, as far as notice, once the board makes a decision, and how we notice from that point forward, from the state requirements for ed facilities. So we, that, that gives us timeline, as long as we can get it done before the semester ends, we could start looking at notice moving forward. Also remind, remind you that your policy, a good part of your policy on this is that the school principals that were impacted, as well as the school SAC chairs, part of your policy, were on the committees for a purpose, you know, so because their schools were impacted, that was also a communication piece that was built in at each particular site that was impacted. So keep that in mind, as well as the flexibility that your policies provide right now with honoring top grades remaining, and the choice, the choice statutes that allow existing choice to remain. So there's really some great flexibility built in right now. I agree that, I think more communication's better.
So I'll go ahead then, I'll work with the superintendent, we'll get the, we'll go ahead, and we'll have public comment till the 19th, which again, recognizing Ms. Barker's first, first, first opportunity to be part of the board, and then we'll set up a date after that to be able to come back in order to, to vote, and we'll make sure that it's pushed out to all the parents at those schools that are impacted, so that they do have an opportunity for their voice to be heard, because I think that is more than reasonable, especially when you have a large investment in where you live in your community.
And, and I agree with everything that was said, and just to make sure that we stay within our own timelines, because I don't want to violate any state statute, I don't want to violate any local ordinance or whatever, and our own school board policy, that's why I think it's gonna be good that we evaluate our policies. But I do have to say, and some might say that, you know, maybe I'm being very hardline on this, there is personal responsibility to make sure, once that information gets out, you have to check it yourself. A parent has to check it themselves. Our job is to make sure that information gets out every way possible, but then it's the individual's responsibility to check it out and get the facts, and if they have questions, ask those questions, because at some point, we have to say, this is our choice. So, thank you.
Superintendent Connor, anything further?
No, I think my clear direction is, we will hold a public hearing, and I think we have a 6 o'clock start time to our 19th meeting. I intend to get through the introduction part of our regular meeting and hold a 6:30 public hearing, if that's good with the board. We'll just do a stop where we're at, we'll open up the public hearing at 6:30, whoever wants to speak at that time may do that in accordance to our public comment policy, and then we'll convene on a future date soon after to allow the board to absorb that feedback, and it looks to be maybe a special call board meeting to take final action on our boundary recommendation, which is scenario one for the public.
Yes, and I, I think I would be supporting that also, based on the recommendation of the district, but needing parental, having the parent input, I think is gonna be significant. With that, it looks like we're now on to member comments. Thank you, Dr. Kemp, Dr. Johnson, we appreciate it.
Ms. Marinelli, any public comments?
No, I just want to thank all the presenters, it was another informative workshop, so thank you to everybody, and it's nice to see Ms. Mickey Ryan, so welcome, glad you could come, and I just think everybody does a great job, so thank you.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. I, too, I know how much time and effort went into this, the thought process, and, and it's just an ongoing process, so I'm appreciative of all of the deep dive and the work. I'll probably make another public comment about this later on tonight, but I'm grateful that our school referendum passed. I, I know that this was, can be a tough conversation, but I really wasn't looking forward to having conversations about a 20% hit to the budget. So this is a happy time for our school district. I also really want to give a heartfelt thanks to our reputation, our teachers, our students, our bus drivers, everybody that was, that's connected to our school district, because I think that is the momentum that really took us to really win in a very crowded political ballot. And it was hard to find it at the bottom of the, of the ballot, but it's our school's reputation that really precedes itself, and that's, everyone's common thread is that we want the best for our kids. So thank you to the public.
And thank you, and hopefully at a school in the future, we can name it the Seminoles Garnet in Gold, that'd just be a recommendation as we move forward, but not after this year. No, no, Dr. Kemp, no. With that, no further comments, I'll have some for the, for later, we'll be adjourned, and we'll reconvene at 3 PM today.